Calm meeting to order, Monday, November tenth at six P M. Karate, can you roll call?
Jason.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Gigs.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Dylan.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Karate, here.
Craig Birch is excused. This is an open meeting and has been posted. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America which is the nation under God, indivisible, every being, and every substance.
We start out with recognition, employee of the month from Claridan Avenue Elementary School.
Thank you. Good evening. Angelo, would you please come up? So Angie is the Claridan Health Aid. She is consistently described as calm, kind, and caring among parents, staff, and students. She supports all students with patience and compassion, creating a welcoming environment where students feel safe and cared for. Her professionalism, organization, and knowledge stand out, as does her ability to address both the medical and emotional needs of every child. Angie's demeanor and dedication incur value in trusted presence of the school. We are truly fortunate to have Angie as part of the Claridan Avenue team. Congratulations, Angie. Thank you so much. Thank you for that.
Yep, next on, we have the donor recognitions.
Thank you. We have two donations or multiple donations recognized from one event in two groups. We have the B Student Center. They graciously donated one thousand eighty-four dollars to our school district. The funds are going to be used to help our Summer Buddies Program. And then we had a number of individuals make donations for Part View in the Dark. We had Docside donate five hundred dollars. Educators Credit Union donated two hundred and fifty dollars in trinkets. Mr. Porter, Dale, donated candy. Fork in the Road donated a hundred and fifty dollars. Lynn Chevrolet donated one thousand. Michelle Green donated two hundred and fifty. Mr. Craig Birch donated one hundred. The Optimist Club donated three hundred. Dudek Tree Service donated one hundred. Kiwanis took care of parking. My Personal Gardener donated one hundred and fifty dollars. And Craig Family Farms donated pumpkins, hay bales, and corn stacks. So, thank you for both sets of donations. We will send out acknowledgements from the district.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments. Do we have any? Okay. Moving on to my favorite part of every meeting, student report. So come on up. Listen, you talk, don't even, don't be afraid to grab the mic and bring it right up to your mouth, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, parents, if you want to come up and take pictures, feel free to come on up here and take pictures.
You guys can hold the microphone like this, too. It's easier to hold it in your lap. That way you're not...
You can come back here and get better pictures if you want.
We're not super.
This is what it's about, so, awesome. Okay, you can start whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Alice. I've been at Claridan since kindergarten. Hi, my name is Alex and I have been at Claridan since kindergarten. Today, Alice and I are going to give you a rundown of the top ten awesome things at Claridan so far. We are only two and a half months in, so there's a lot coming on the way. Let's get started. I think we should start even before school starts with number ten. Our back-to-school bash and open house. The back-to-school bash was a playground party. Families came to let out their kids and see their friends they hadn't seen all summer. There was an ice cream truck, too, and that was nice.
An open house is always fun. That's when you get to meet your new teachers, find your new locker, and see where you sit in class.
Number nine is friends and teachers.
Friends are a great part of school at Claridan. We focus on including everyone and being kind. You can find a ton of friends in all the classes.
That's very true, and in all grade levels.
Number eight, sixth grade. We are both in sixth grade, and I think sixth grade is awesome this year.
And since we are out of order, we get to use our Cougar Cash to buy extra recess or decorate donuts.
Our community is super important to us.
Number seven, the Jack-o'-lantern job. Our third graders made us proud with their amazing pumpkin curbing, curvings displayed at Field Park.
Check out those pumpkins. They looked awesome at night, all lit up, too.
And our cafeteria is definitely smelled like pumpkin all day.
Our teachers understand that learning happens everywhere. Number six is field trips. So sometimes we get to go, we get to go learn outside of the classroom on field trips.
Kid approved.
Some of the trips that have happened so far this year have been the state capitol for fourth graders and a fire station for four- and five-year-old kindergartners.
Kindergarten went to the dentist, too.
A group went to the zoo, and don't forget the sixth-grade-only bowling trip.
Lots to come, too. I can't wait for the fifth graders to go to Biz Town. Remember that one, Alex? I was the DJ.
I was the CEO of Fox Six News.
That was definitely a cool trip.
Our theme is number five. This year's theme is Words Have Power.
The more vocabulary we look, the more vocabulary words we learn, the smarter we become. We learn about words on the daily announcements every day.
Words are more than just vocabulary words, though. We learn about kindness and using our words the right way.
That's true. Words are powerful.
Number four is the incentives from the goal run.
Yes. We had a thermometer as we worked to raise money. As a building, we earned prizes on the way.
They were cool, like popsicles for everyone, goal bracelet, goal bracelets. And Mrs. Hart had to wear roller skates for the whole day.
One morning, our teachers even greeted us with wearing inflatable costumes. That was hilarious.
Number three is a shout-out to our parent-teacher group meeting for meeting our goal.
We had a goal to raise twenty thousand dollars to put towards our new sound system in our gym. The sound system is used for all of our family events, P E classes every day, and our monthly assemblies. And we did it. This is, this picture was taken on the skate day. But in the end, we had the whole thermometer filled in.
The coolest thing about it is that the company was already installing on the Wednesday before Halloween, so we, we will get to use it all year.
Number two has to be the actual goal one.
I agree. The goal run is a celebration at the end of our fundraiser. The BTG decorates the gym with black lights, Mr. Warshay is the best DJ, and we run, dance, and pretty much have a great time.
The actual best number-one reason that Claridan is the best is the warning. There is so much warning. I know I'm getting, I am getting a great education at Claridan.
Me, too. In every class we go to, it is a focus, it is focused on every kid's achieving and learning at high levels.
And all subjects, too.
And there is when. It's a time in the day that stands for what I need. It's all different, differentiated for each student.
It might be hard sometimes, but we can do hard things.
I agree.
That way, you just see the end of our top ten list.
Do you have any questions for us about our school?
Who got to eat all the pumpkin seeds?
I don't know.
And did you ask your principal hard? He felt that at the end of the day.
It was my ankle.
Any questions or comments? I think you two did a great job of representing your school. So, awesome job.
Thank you.
All right, now we have presentations for Claridan Avenue Elementary School.
I don't know how I'll top that.
Right?
All right. So, I am here to give you a little information about our school goals this year. Before we start, I just want to shout out my team. I have a giant team over at Claridan, and they are filled with hard workers, from the teachers to the paras, to the student support services group, to the office staff. They are all just fantastic. So, all of the work that is happening over there is just a giant team effort, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that. So I have three goals to introduce to you. One is about ELA, or English Language Arts. One will be around math, and the other one will be around behavior, okay? The first goal is around English Language Arts. The statement, the goal statement says that by spring, between seventy-two and ninety percent of our students will meet benchmark or above on an ELA universal screener. And I have all the measures kind of in that table for you. And the reason it's such a wide range is because of kindergarten through sixth grade, there is a wide range of universal screeners that we use. And so instead of just generalizing, we were going to use this assessment. We wanted to make it grade level specific to make sure that our different grade levels or our different grade bands have a different data point to look, to look at. This is how we have made the decision and where we are right now. So you can see that in some of the grade levels, already with current fall data, we're above what we had set. So we may need to take a look mid-year and make some adjustments. We also have some that are a little bit lower, so our goal would be to extend or to reach that even higher. And I ready that one at the end for sixth grade. Because it is a brand-new assessment for our sixth graders, we may have to look at the baseline and how that looks for our learners to make sure that what we're asking them to hit is actually achievable for right now. So we're studying that new test to see what we come up with. The real, the real part is these action steps. This is how we're going to get there. One thing I want to point out is that all of the action steps you see right here with the ELA goal match identically what you'll see for the math goal, and that is on purpose. The steps that we've chosen are the largest levers that we know that will be able to see student achievement. The first one being high-quality instruction. Universal instruction for every student, guaranteed and viable curriculum. What you see in one classroom in a grade level is, is matching. We have the same targets in all of them. That's very important to us. Our PLT meetings is a huge lever for us. It is getting our teachers together, having them collaborate, talking about instructional strategies, talking about data, looking at assessments, and seeing what that work is telling us to do next. So that, those two are our biggest levers. The next one is a little new. We are purposely having our students from four K through sixth grade develop student learning goals. We are attaching our students to their learning on purpose. This is a, a new goal for us. We didn't have this last year in all areas, but the areas that we did see this, we saw the most amount of growth and achievement. So this is something you'll see in both ELA and in math. And then obviously, just monitoring our tier-one instruction, ensuring that we have high levels of learning in all of the areas of our building. And then if we aren't seeing that, like what supports are we providing for our teachers to make sure that all students have access to high levels of learning? Moving into math, our goal statement says that a minimum of eighty-seven percent of our students in grades one through five will place in the CP, that means college pathway or low-risk categories. We're using A-MATH, our Fast Exam, at the end of the year as our, as our leverage. We selected this because we know that our, we did make some growth last year, and we want to make sure that our students are growing no matter what level they start with us at. So we're really looking at growth. If a student starts, you know, at the eightieth percentile, let's say in the beginning of the year, we want to make sure that they're also growing. It's not just relying on them to be in that advanced or meeting areas on, at any of the assessments. So we're really looking at growth. And again, like I said before, when we were in the ELA, our action steps are similar by design. Like we want that to be our practice that we go back to when we are meeting with our teams, when we are looking at instruction and planning. We want that to be the same thing that we see for each of those higher-level content areas. Our last goal is around behavior. We have decided that we'd like to see our behavior improve as evidenced by a decrease in major or minor behavior incidents. Now I have two little asterisks there on purpose. And the reason I have it on purpose is because I know that we may have to go back to the drawing board in this area, not because we set our goal too high, but because we are constantly training our staff what to put down as a major or a minor. And so I don't want to derail our learning on that. I think we should document if it's happening, it's happening, that it tells us we need to intervene in some way, shape, or form, which then could, you know, not have us meet that. It's more important to me that we look at behavior and what's happening and not happening, and what our response to it is, rather than the actual number of behavior incidents that we see. Why did we select this? Because students, as they're learning, the same as they're learning reading, math, writing, they're also learning how to behave in certain settings. This includes a lot of academic behavior, behaviors that academically, we have to teach things like organization and, you know, how to respond in classes. Like those are academic behaviors that we're seeing as we could beef that up to make sure that students are able to engage in high levels of learning wherever they go. So you can see that little tier system down there. The biggest lever for us right now is to make sure that our tier-one, our universal behavior supports for all students, is very, very strong. Those are making sure students are showing appropriate behaviors, but that they know what they are in each level or each area of our school, that we're intervening before unwanted behaviors escalate. That proactive approach is very, very important to us, and that we're monitoring student progress in all areas. We're using data to make decisions. It's very important. And also using the three tiers, like level one, tier one, for everyone. This is every single student. Level two isn't, right? That's those targeted behaviors to really help a student that needs a little bit more. And then tier three probably should be very, a very small percentage. I'm talking like probably two to three students in the whole school shouldn't be that intensive if your tier one is supporting that to make sure that it's working. So this is, this is where we are, and these are some of the steps that we are, I'm making sure that we're looking at, which is our school-wide PBIS. We're trying to make sure that we are supporting all of our students socially, emotionally, behaviorally, and academically by use of positive behavior supports. We want to show and recognize students, thanking them for doing what's expected by use of Super Roars, Cougar Cash, daily announcements, characteristics that we want to see. Right now, we're in the middle of a respect challenge, and we have hot pink Cougar Cash. And you only earn hot pink Cougar Cash when you show respect. And we have a big box in the office. They come in, they drop their hot pink cash. We ring bells, like it's a big deal because we, that's what we want to see. So we're trying to do more of that for whole-school tier-one approaches. Also, making sure that everyone knows what the Cougar Code is. That is basically our guaranteed and viable behavioral expectations in our building. So we're teaching that every single day in our classrooms, in the hallways, in the gym, in the music room, everywhere. And then really, we have a solid tier-two team right now that's analyzing student behaviors and assigning appropriate interventions to target those behaviors. Not a one-size-fits-all, but if this child needs a little extra, like what can we do to help them learn and be successful wherever they go? That was a lot, and that was really fast. And I just told my kids not to talk fast, and I did. But that, that's what we have for our three goals that we set this year for Claridan for our staff. Again, we have a lot of really, really strong, hard-working people over there, and they're working hard every single day. And I'm just very, very proud of them and what I see happening at the daily. So what questions would you have for me about the school or our goals?
Any other questions, comments? This might not be a fair question for you, but if you could ask your teachers, since you have four K in your, in your school... you have 4K in your, in your school and your building, I was wondering like what the difference is, like have they seen a difference? Like, how prepared our students are from K-4 in our district going to kindergarten versus like our outsourced resources and then coming to our school?
I think that the students that are in our 4K and that have come, from my opinion, I'm not going to speak on anyone else's opinion, but from what I saw, the ones that stuck with us, they already feel this level of comfort in the building, in the hallway, knowing the school rules, knowing how to or where, where to go for things. They're, they're a couple steps ahead. Their family feels welcome and they know what, you know, how we operate. As for academic, I think any child that has 4K prior to kindergarten is a little, a couple steps ahead. I don't think that they can't catch up if they don't do 4K, but I think the ones that do 4K are just ready, more ready to start the school year academically.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, consent agenda. We're looking for the approval of the school board meeting minutes from October twenty, twenty twenty-five. Any questions or comments? There are none, those are approved by consent. And Crosby's favorite, policies.
A little death by policy tonight. I'm just introducing this list to you. All of the policies are there, all of them are linked. We are not going forward next week for approval on these. I'm here to answer any questions that you might add if you're first read, but please know that we'll be bringing this up, looking for approval at the December school board meeting. So, just introducing it tonight and answer any questions out of the gates, but we have a lot to work through these.
December gets a little kind of hairy. Is there anything that has to be approved by the beginning of the year? If not, maybe you move to January?
There is nothing that, nothing that requires urgent approval in this list.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Mike?
Unless I'm completely missing it, seventy-five thirty point zero-two, staff and school officials use of personal communication devices. It's revised, but I don't see a link to it down there.
We will get that added for the next meeting, thank you, Mike.
Anything else on policies?
I have a couple questions. Because I read them all, Joe.
I'm surprised you have enough time, that much sleep that's needed between one meeting and the next. These are a good cure for insomnia.
So, my first question is on the board member behavior communication code conduct policy. We did zero-one four-four point five.
Yep.
At the bottom, it talks about enforcement. And I'm just curious what that process is for enforcement of the different bullet points that are underneath it. It's not laid out and we are elected officials. I mean, not that I plan on violating this policy, but I'm just curious, like what is the process for enacting the enforcement?
So, that would really be up to the board president or if the complaint was against the board president, the board vice president, if the complaints come in. Speaking in how this policy has been used in my prior experience, if complaints come in, come in either by, by the community or by fellow board members, the, the process to implement usually starts out as conversation. In this case, Dale, if I could use you as an example, this reporter, we, you know, we had a complaint from a community member based off the following. But really, it gets to a place where there really, there's not a whole lot the board can vote to censure, but that really doesn't have any teeth because the board member is still a voting board member. We operate off of a committee of the whole. We don't have committee assignments. I've seen school boards remove people from all committee assignments. So, really, it's the process to respond. It's the process to inform the board member, but really, the ultimate consequence is the next election. And if the community is dissatisfied with somebody, they would then, you know, know that and vote that person out.
Okay. My, my biggest concern is with C, which is restricting the board members' rights to request items to be put on the agenda.
Yep.
Is there a situation in which that could be weaponized against a board member? And I'm not concerned about our current board, but I'm thinking of future boards and is that a potential scenario that could happen?
It, it's a situation that could happen, but usually it's one of those things where the punishment, if you will, fits the crime. I have been in situations where board members have requested over and over again to have a variety of topics put on the agenda that are misplaced based off of where the work is. And so, it's a situation where it's accommodated, it's accommodated, it's accommodated. And then, you get to a point where you've asked for this item so many times, we are not going to put this item on the agenda.
Okay.
And then, that's the, up to the discretion of the board president at that time or by vote the whole board.
Okay. All right, that was that one. On consent agenda, which is zero-one six-six point one.
Yep.
I would like to request that the approval for WIAA membership not be included in the consent agenda. I would like that to be an actual action item.
We could take note of that. When the policy comes forward, then that would be, you know, kind of a set aside thing that the committee would, the board would then vote on, but we will make note of that.
Okay. And then, my last one is regarding the dress and appearance policy fifty-five eleven. At the end, the procedure for correction, everything has been redlined, but for, we're just going to make you remove that article of clothing or change of clothes. That's the only consequence?
Well, so, there is policy fifty, fifty-six hundred point zero-one, which is the consequence. What you see redlined here is something that we can't do as a school district. And I honestly have no idea how this got added into a policy. I can't have somebody come in and weigh in on another child's conduct in any way, shape, or form. I can't have students do it, I can't have other parents do it, I can't even form a committee to, to judge one individual student, which is why all of that language has struck. If we run into a situation where a student is violating a, a dress code, if they're violating a code of conduct, we have policy fifty-five hundred point zero-one. And then, you would start getting into a situation where it was repeated refusal, it would be, you know, defiance of the staff members directive, things like that, insubordination, what we would apply to the situation, but we wouldn't actually be penalizing the dress code in that particular situation. So, what has struck is, should never be in a policy, should never have been in a policy.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that there is more teamwork than just, we're going to make you change and that's it.
Yep. So, we're going to make you change if you refuse to change, then we would go into insubordination, which is outlined in the student, the consequences for student misconduct.
And that covers repeat offenders, too?
That, that's a progressive discipline policy.
All right.
It's important to note about dress code, though, oftentimes, and I talked to our administrators, it was a concern brought forward in October. If you saw the middle school and high school newsletters, the principals addressed it, they addressed it with the students, they gave the reminders to the staff. What we often run into, though, is we'll call home and parents will tell us, aren't my child dressed fine? I bought those clothes, I, they can wear those clothes. You know, so we're, we're really sitting in that, we, we manage this, but the enforcement, when there's a lot of support from home, the enforcement of something becomes difficult to do. So, we do administer consequences, we do follow up on it, but if, if a student is wearing a certain type of clothing to school one day and that's what was purchased for them, that they come back to school the next day and we have to enforce it again the next day.
Uniforms are a great thing.
Uniforms, uniforms are a great thing. There's definitely a process to implement that. Milwaukee Public Schools actually implemented uniforms at their schools. Yep, flags and a, and a polo shirt or a T-shirt with high school, middle school, school colors.
Who's paying for it? The parents of each kid or the district as a whole?
I don't know. My kids went to a pro field school prior to coming to Maguano and there was a discounted buy on certain like Lands End items, so the, the pricing of uniform-style clothes was not.
It's pretty inexpensive. I mean, Target carries on Old Navy, I mean, you can find uniforms, it's not hard. I'm all for it.
It does require a, it's a pretty long process to get there.
Have a policy or a board president can say nah.
Kid? Any other questions on policy? All right, we've got personnel topics, staff handbook revision.
All right, so just when I thought I was done with this staff handbook, we met with our insurance providers and had some changes that we needed to make in order to be compliant with them. So, these were not changes that were negligent on our part, but just changes that we needed to make. So, two things that happened in the course of the year that kind of drew up these changes. One is that we unfortunately had, I would say, a significant number of our employees who unfortunately faced catastrophic illness. And our practice in the district was that when we had an employee who faced catastrophic illness, our current handbook allowed them to request additional sick leave so that they did not have to carry the burden of going unpaid while facing catastrophic illness. And so, what we learned in working with our stop-loss carrier and our insurance provider is that while we want to be employee favorable, we have to do that in line with their policies as well. And so, we had to change our practice to, yes, we can, when an employee is facing catastrophic illness, allow up to sixty days of sick leave. And that will take any employee who is eligible for an FMLA through their FMLA. It will also allow that employee then, if they qualify for long-term disability, to get through their, what's called their waiting period, their elimination period, to qualify them for long-term disability. So, we had to rewrite our policy to, or sorry, our handbook to align with that. We also then had to put into our practice that once that is exhausted, the employee would be offered Cobra. So, once an employee has exhausted their sick leave and their FMLA, whichever comes first, then they would be offered Cobra. And so, we still really want to be employee favorable. We're not talking about, you know, thirty people on our plan that this, you know, happens to. We're talking about four or five, that again, catastrophic illness, we've defined as a cancer diagnosis that could result in, again, potentially never coming back to work. And so, when employees are facing that, we, again, Joe kind of sums it up with, we don't want them to have to worry about paying their mortgage during that time. And so, anything that we can do to protect that from happening, we want to try and be able to do. So, we just aligned our handbook to be able to do that in compliance with what our insurance company was asking us for.
Do you offer long-term disability?
We do.
Okay.
It doesn't, the elimination period, though, is that sixty days. So, that's why we have the handbook language now that says up to sixty days you can request sick leave. Most of our employees, so our employees can carry a balance of up to eighty days of sick leave. And so, we have a number of our veteran staff that have that balance, but, you know, staff members who are in their, I would say thirties to forties, who have had children or who have had, you know, they don't have that balance of eighty sick days. So, they're generally, if this happens to them, they're looking at taking unpaid time to deal with this.
Any questions, comments? Eric?
What about the first paragraph that was inserted? The staff may be required to present documentation of the medical illness, that, that one.
Yeah, so that was language that we've always had the ability in our policy for staff to be asked to present a medical excuse. We just shored up that language essentially. So, again, that's asking, we, can we provide, or I'm sorry, can we request a medical excuse? And we just shored up the language on that.
Even just for one day?
Correct.
So, like, what if they don't go to the doctor, they just don't feel good?
If we don't have reason to request a medical excuse, we wouldn't. This would be, again, somebody comes to work and is walking around perhaps saying something like, I have this really bad gross eye infection. And we might say something like, maybe you should go and get that checked out, or did you get clearance from a doctor to come back to work? Things like that.
We might also have it on the other end where somebody might want to extend a vacation or a long weekend and we might want to request the doctor's bill for the Tuesday before the long Thanksgiving, you know, should that.
We may have that on occasion.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Student learning topics.
Okay, I have new course proposals for you tonight. At the October committee of the whole meeting, I previewed these two course proposals and then I will just give you a little bit more information about those. Also, in the board documents, the course proposals were linked for you for your information as well. These two proposals will be coming back to you next week for approval. So, the first course proposal is to add the Advanced Placement Pre-Calculus course. So, we currently offer pre-calculus at the high school. We have a pretty strong enrollment in that course. We have five to six sections of pre-calculus each year. We would like to add this Advanced Placement option. The main difference for this would be, one, that students would be able to get that college credit. This would be an Advanced Placement course through the College Board, so they have the potential to get college credit. And then, the main difference in the content would be that this course goes a little deeper into modeling, reasoning, and multiple representations. Also, this course has a strong emphasis on modeling real-world situations and data analysis. So, similar, just goes a little bit deeper. We would anticipate that we would have similar numbers for, for pre-calculus, but some of those kids who would typically take pre-calculus would go into the Advanced Placement. So, where we are typically running five to six sections of pre-calculus, we would anticipate about the same with a different distribution. Maybe four of those are pre-calculus into our Advanced Placement. There would not be any costs associated with adding this course except for some, some summer curriculum writing work. We do have a budget for that, so we would be able to handle that through there. Any questions about Advanced Placement Pre-Calc? Okay. And the second course proposal is for a revision to one of our current courses. So, we currently offer Advanced Sports and Entertainment Marketing. Currently, we have usually just one section of that course. We are proposing changing this course from a semester-long course to a full-year course. So, we talked about this in October with the addition of the new scoreboard. We want to add some curriculum that would teach the students how to use the scoreboard and how to do some, some different marketing with the scoreboard. There would be some equipment cost for this course. We would need to purchase some video live streaming equipment as well as some computers for editing. This cost for this equipment would be paid out of our CTE incentive grant, which Dustin Lehman manages. And in addition to that, students would be able to earn certifications from the work that they would be doing in this course, so that would offset the cost. We would also have a little bit of curriculum writing time that would be required for that. Again, that would be handled out of the budget that we have for that. Any questions about that course?
None.
Okay, so I will be bringing those back next week for approval. And then, just to preview that in December, we will be bringing one more course proposal to you. We currently have online PE courses. We have a level one and a level two. We are recognizing the need to add the third level. Students need to take three half-credits of PE, especially with our Advanced Placement offerings and weighted credit. We are seeing kids wanting to take their PE through online so they can clear up some space in their schedule for other courses. So, we will be bringing that proposal to you in December. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Tom, you're up.
All right, so for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we would like to bring in up to ten sections of full-day 4K. We already have two sections, one at Big Ben, one at Clarendon. We have one full-time teacher who is teaching two half-day sections of 4K at Prairie View Elementary. We're looking for the latitude to go up to ten sections of full-day 4K to meet the demands of the community. We have a tentative outlined as to what buildings we'd like to house this in, but we're looking for some flexibility there as well, just based on where do the families live, when they apply, can we accommodate, is the building... Can we accommodate? Does the building have space? So on, so forth. It's our intent to get all the 4K students who'd like to be in 4K to attend their school based on those attendance boundaries you see on the map there. So if you live in the Prairie View, the attendance boundary, we'd like to... Yep? Sure. We'd like to get all those students, but we can't guarantee that that's going to be the case. So we're looking for some flexibility to make changes or just adjustments if needed due to space or if there's some parental choices that we need to take into consideration. We will consider adding 4K to Eagleville in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, once sixth grade moves out. But that's not a, we're not looking for action in that school at this time. You guys have any questions about that?
Just saying, with their tight space there, is that a wise decision?
At which school?
Eagleville. Well, I would think with sixth grade leaving, just, I can allow it here. I can give them some relief in the school, so tighten that.
I guess that's a decision to make a year from now. That's not the concern at the moment, not to discount it. But we can consider that in the future. But yeah, those types of decisions, you know, should we do it? Is it the right move? Is there enough interest? Do we have the demand for it? There's a whole bunch of things that would have to take place before we would even do that. But that's for, defer till a later date nonetheless.
And I think one of the things about 4K is just being flexible to what the community is asking for. It's huge. I mean, we see that with community partners. We see that with perochial schools in the community. You know, they're adjusting and they're adapting to what families are asking for. You know, we similarly would try to do that with four-year old kinder.
I was just curious, 4K subject to open enrollment from other school districts as well?
So the priority would go to residents?
First.
Yes.
And then, as available, we would allow open enrollment?
Yes, if there is capacity, that would be the intent is, priority goes to residents, resident families. And then if it's capacity after that, we'll assign that to open enrollment applicants, which is really no different than what we do at any other grade level.
We currently do have open enrollment into 4K now.
Is there enough interest to keep one or two of the classes as half-day, or is that just not feasible?
We would be proposing to allow our community partners to provide half-day. What we are hearing from families is overwhelming the full day. I think our full day, when we do the lottery, we do the application process, I think the full-day section spilled up in nine minutes last year. So then everybody else was on a waiting list to go into those. So we are seeing a lot of demand for full day. If our community partners are interested in continuing to partner with us, they could provide those half-day sessions for kids.
Do you have the space to accommodate these sections in all these schools?
We do. We are still in the study standpoint, but we know that, for instance, Prairie View has three classrooms that could be used at the moment. We know that Clarendon and Big Ben have additional space. The section has space as well. Rolling Hills does have one classroom that could accommodate it.
So the, you know, the features of a, and attributes of a 4K or 5K classroom is, you know, to have a crawlout area where it's carpeted. It's a common feature of classrooms at that age. We would have to likely, without, you know, once upon a time, we thought, does every 4K and every 5K classroom have a bathroom? We're not looking to do that. If there's a vacant classroom that's perhaps used for special education or some other purpose that we feel would be better used for 4K, we would do that with slight modifications to get carpeted in that crawlout area. So once we identify, you know, where the need is, what schools we're going to bring it into, and if the classrooms are suitable size-wise, we'll come back with a request to use, you know, some fund forty-six dollars to help those classrooms get themselves ready.
This is the third year we've done full-day 4K as an option, or is this the fourth year we've done that? Do you recall?
It's the third year, I believe.
How is our...
I think we piloted it two years ago.
Yeah.
Yep, so I want to say this is year three.
How has kindergarten, how's enrollment? Has it changed or grown? Because I know that was one of the hopes, is that we're hooking these families in, we're not losing them to the wonderful programs that their schools offer, and then kids are staying with those schools. How has that changed? Have you seen anything that's moved the needle at all, or is just...
4K enrollment is down from where it was five years ago. That's not a criticism or something you could attribute, like, you know, pin on how we offer it. How many babies exist here, you know, that are now four years old, you know, four years later, five years old, five years later? So I do believe that, just generally speaking, competition is a good thing. And there is a lot of competition out there, be it from private schools, so on, so forth, daycare providers. And I think that will only increase as time moves along. So I think our response ought to be to offer what, you know, the yellow school bus, taking 4K kids to school. You know, Ms. Hart said that earlier, that those kids are integrated into the school community a full year earlier. And that just seems to be par for the course at this time. When I was a kid, oh, it was half-day, five-K. Now we're doing full-day 4K, and that's just the way of the times. Those kids, they read and write at the end of 4K. It's a little scary, to be honest, but they're capable of a lot.
Any other questions on that?
I just think it's important to note that our 4K program does have a strong play base in it, as does kindergarten. So we do reinforce the academics for those programs are very child-friendly. There's a lot of play, there's a lot of movement, there's rest breaks in the day. So it's important for the community and for our board to know that it's not sitting at a desk like a high school senior for eight hours and consume information. It's more fun for the little ones.
Okay, then the next thing I just wanted to do was to share our tax levy apportionment. So when we have our thirty-four million dollar tax levy, how that goes out to the eleven municipalities within the district. I did write all the town and village clerks to let them know. And we are bound by law to notify them what their share of the tax levy is by today, November tenth. So I'm just going to quickly give you a high-level overview. I included this letter here, but if we take a look at what's on the screen right now. The tax levy, the thirty-four point two million dollars, is shared with communities based on what their share of the twenty-five, twenty-six property value is. So in our district, in that map in the corner there, if you add up all the property value, it's five point nine billion dollars. Here is every municipality's share. We have ten in Waukesha County, and then we have two that are in Walworth County. So our school district spans two counties here. From twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, those values change annually. What I just kind of draw your attention towards here, for example, is the town of Maguano, as a share, they went from twenty-six point nine percent of the tax levy down to twenty-six point three percent of the tax levy. So they decreased by about six tenths, whereas the village of Vernon increased by about that same amount. So as the village of Vernon's share of property value goes up, so goes their share of the tax levy. The overall tax levy went up seven point one eight percent. But if you look at the town of Maguano, their tax levy will go up four point nine percent, whereas the village of Vernon is up nine point six percent. Again, because the village of Vernon now is claiming a larger share of the value of properties inside the school district. So I communicated this information out to all clerks. We have an article coming out in the Triad in a couple, within a couple of weeks here, just explaining the state budget and how that impacts local taxes. Ultimately, when state aid goes down, property taxes will go up, and there's really no two ways about it. I have more information coming up about this very topic in the enrollment presentation that I'll just briefly deliver here at the end of the finance facility agenda. But we're trying to explain this as best we can so everybody knows the why. We're not trying to just make this vote happen and we move on. We're explaining everything that we've done and why. Okay? So any questions about any of this? Okay. Next up I had then was just, we do this every quarter, is just investment returns. So I'm just going to give you two updates here. Typically, I only give you an update on Fund Seventy-three or OPEV investment here. Our OPEV investment here, there's two sheets here. So you can see that there's four point four million dollars set aside for future post-employment benefits for teachers. And the interest rate returns have all been four point five five percent, each of the three months in the third quarter. If we take a look at, we have a 403B trust fund. We liquidated this, and we put this into each teacher's individual 403B account, which they can have and hold and keep once they hit five years of continued service with the district. So we liquidated just about all that, twenty-one thousand still remains. Because this balance is under a certain threshold, it earns a different rate of return. So just communicating that to you there. And then we have our funds where we borrowed our eighty-two point one million dollars as the first wave of the loan associated with the middle school project here. We have the third quarter results here. So we partnered with Amper Sam Public Advisors, they're from Waukesha, Wisconsin. We have, you can see of, we have a project account, and then we have some debt service. So it's just two kind of, two separate amounts right there. We kept, we keep forty-two point three million dollars semi-liquid to start paying bills here in the short term as all those projects start taking place, the man-hours, the equipment that we must buy, the materials. Then we have some of it locked up in longer-term CDs, knowing that those CDs will be redeemable, we'll get the money back. And then we're just timing up when the money's needed and maximizing interest rates and returns. In the third quarter, we earned six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars on our interest. So that exceeded what we projected by about seventy-two thousand dollars. So this money, again, will be able to be used towards the project and anything associated with the referendum question that we asked when the board was approving it here. So things are moving along according to the script. Things are going well. Okay? Any questions there? Okay. Health insurance update, I'm going to ask that. We defer, there's some more information I need to gather. I'm going to defer this until December, so I'll come back with that. And then the last one I have is just, I have it listed as twenty-six, twenty-seven enrollment, but I meant to put twenty-five, twenty-six, I apologize. Let me briefly just take you through just some enrollment figures here as we take a look at our Third Friday head counts here. So overall, school district enrollment here, you can see we're at just over forty-seven hundred students. You can see we were growing, 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 all the way into nineteen-twenty. This is our COVID year aberration. Then we rebounded to five thousand eighty-seven students, and we've been on a downward trend since. When we did our enrollment projection, you know, at the forefront of our referendum efforts, you know, we did that in between twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. So we just take a snapshot right here and said, let's project where we're going. Take a look at our history there. We had tremendous growth building in to this particular window of time. Again, we've talked about the numerous reasons, high interest rates, high housing costs, how difficult it is to move into a district like ours where the property values can have grown for twelve consecutive years. Taking a look at school by school, Big Ben from year to year, you know, four fifty-six last year, four fifty-seven this year is pretty steady, as is Clarendon. Eagleville likewise, pretty steady. We have a drop-off at Prairie View Elementary there by about twenty-seven students. And section as well is similar. Rolling Hills is up five, excuse me, six students. All right, middle school is up a fair number of students. And last year, we had a huge senior class at Department of Maguano High School, I believe, four hundred and thirty students. You know, a typical high school class is going to be three eighty, three ninety. That one at four thirty was rather large. So you can see that the high school enrollment is down there. So that's our head count. That's, you know, butts in seats when we take a look at the students that are in our buildings on the Third Friday. Open enrollment, we're kind of hitting that high, that long-term stride. We have six consecutive years where we're within six hundred students. So that seems to be our long-term, our trend there, so to speak. And then with count of open enrollment students out, we have about three hundred students there. So again, that seems to be our stride there as well. So that's in terms of like the number of students, but what drives funding for schools is membership. Again, a membership in our Third Friday FTE counts is simply looking at the number of students that live within our district boundaries and attend public schools. So the count is a little bit different than head count because this isn't concerned with the kids' open enrollment in or out. It's how many kids live in our boundaries and attend public schools. And again, you can see where those counts are at the current moment. So you can see that we are down forty-three hundred and thirty-two FTE. All right? What we do is we take three-year averages to smooth out the change of sudden swings up or down. We take a three-year average. And then this is the count that we ultimately multiply by whatever per pupil funding amount the state budget affords us here. So we are down eighty-three students here from year to year. Okay? I will share a projection next month as to where do I think this is going to go. But I'd say the good news is, is I already looked, I had that. From twenty-four, twenty-five into the current school year, every grade level grew. Every first-grade class came back more with, more second graders. Every seventh-grade class came back this year as eighth graders with more students. So across the board, we grew. And we don't have a huge senior class looking to depart here. So like, we've kind of hit something that's going to be more stable than what we had in the current school year. Just want to talk about our revenue limit here real quick. So I'm going to try to use the next two slides to just kind of highlight like where we are. And next month, we're going to start building twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. I apologize for that, seems like this never ends. This never ends. But as you take a look at our revenue limit here, so this chart, this, each bar each year ultimately represents the amount of funding that we're going to get. The dark blue on each bar, the majority of it is just your basic revenue this year. As we're looking at this area right here, it's your eleven thousand six hundred fifty dollars times the number of students in our three-year average. What we have in orange is our declining enrollment exemption. So as we lost eighty-three students in our three-year average, we basically have, this is our last call. This money is being provided to us in a one-time, last manner. And then we have to use the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to plan accordingly for next school year. This green area, this one point seven million dollars, this is ultimately a part of our revenue limit that goes for students that attend private voucher schools. You can see here, back in twenty-twenty-one, this cost was four hundred and sixty thousand. Taxpayers now pay seventeen, one point seven million dollars for students that attend private voucher schools. So I just kind of want to highlight the reasons as we talk about the basic revenue limit formula. And then this orange, green, and blue, these are just those adjustments, those exemptions that get added on that are like kind of one-time infusions of money for specific purposes. When I look back then, whatever the, for whatever reason the revenue limit increases, be it more students, more money per student, the private voucher costs are going up, whatever drives that cost up, this blue bar is the same thing we just looked at, just all one pot of money. This year, we have fifty-five point nine million dollars of revenue limit authority. We cannot receive more property taxes and state aid than fifty-five point nine million dollars. That's what the law says. When you take a look at, once, you know, we have this mathematics completed, then the state contributes a share of that blue bar, and the orange bar is state aid. You can see state aid over the course of the last six years at twenty-three point three million. It grew, it grew. It held serve here, it dipped down a little bit into twenty-three, twenty-four. It grew again in twenty-four, twenty-five. But this particular year, the orange bar decreased by about one point one million dollars. That's a tough deal. So the overall revenue limit authority grew, but the state share decreased. So I'm just trying to continuously explain that message in a way that reaches as many people as possible there. So we will look to project our twenty-six, twenty-seven Third Friday membership next month. We'll take a stab at that. But we lost a hundred and thirty-six FTE. Our three-year average declined by eighty-three FTE. I don't see that being the, that's not going to be the case in twenty-six, twenty-seven. But we'll make that guess next month. That's all I got.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. First thing is the twenty-six, twenty-seven district calendar.
All right, so we have the draft of the calendar ready for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We have an exemption that would be required, however, you passed the wonderful resolution. Carolyn, you read that, yes, thank you. The wonderful resolution that we would submit to the DPI in order to get that, or get the exemption granted. Just some of the overall highlights of the calendar. One is that students are starting school before Labor One is that students are starting school before Labor Day, but we are also then ending with students by Memorial Day. We have staff professional learning built into the calendar. And again, that is a real priority for our staff, is that that happens. A little bit different is that staff are coming back after students end. Staff do have 187-day contracts. We don't really want to mess with that contract because that messes with their pay. And so we do want them to continue to work their full contract. We maintain an alignment of our winter and spring grades with the majority of Waukesha County schools. So there's a few Waukesha County schools that are also doing some construction projects, but majority of them we are aligned with. And then we will continue with a standard start for all of our transition grades, so K4, K5, 7th, and then 9th. And so we feel really excited about this calendar. I think our students are going to probably not be too excited about their way from a 16-day winter break to a bit of a shorter winter break. But other than that, it's a really favorable, I think, calendar for everybody involved.
All right, looking for a motion either to deny or approve?
Make a motion to approve the calendar for 25-26. 26-27, sorry.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the 26-27 district calendar. Any comments or questions?
I know you talked to a parent board about this as well, and the staff. The staff really supported this versus having the slightly longer school day.
Yes.
Was that unanimous unanimously?
The teacher advisory was a unanimous support of this calendar over the additional minutes. Our parent advisory, the feedback was... I don't want to say unanimous, because I didn't... we didn't poll them that way, but the feedback from our parent advisory was very much favorable towards this calendar as well. The earlier the information can get out to them, the better. So they did express that, you know, coming back to school a week early is just if we can get that to parents sooner. But then one parent did bring up, I thought, a really good point, that most open houses historically have been that week. And so for most families that have had kids in the school district, they're generally back from summer vacations that week anyway, preparing for open house, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all who's in favor of approving the 26-27 district calendar, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. Up next, we have executive session according to Wisconsin statute 19.85. We'll be discussing performance evaluation of superintendent, employee compensation, and discuss specific student discipline. For a motion to close the open session, you're going to propose?
I think a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
A motion and a second, Crosby, roll call please.
Jason.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Jake.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Carolyn.
Yes.
As we have.
All right. Open session is closed, we are going to take a couple minutes.